Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for a five o'clock meeting. We'll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Kennedy's absence is noted. Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia's absence is noted.
Okay, we have one person in the audience. I do have a card. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on items listed or not listed. And Mr. Katia, you wanna come up?
Here.
Your turn.
I'm here because I care about police safety, okay? I was a stunt man for 25 years. I've been in some very dangerous car chases, but our car chases are protected by police on the corners and making sure nobody gets in our way. The police up here should have a five-point safety belt in their police cars. They don't have one, okay? A five-point safety belt doesn't cost that much money, and I've hit a car head-on at 50 miles an hour with a five-point safety belt and never got a scratch. They come from the back, they go under the floorboard, and they come up on your back, they go over your shoulders, they go down under your crotch, they go along your waist. They're five points. They cover you everywhere. And when you see something coming, if you gotta get out of it, all you gotta do is there's a click right here, all you do is unclick it and you're out of the belt. The whole five-point. Now, I also said they should have bulletproof windows, and the mayor, so-called mayor, looked at me like I was nuts. And they're sneaking up on police now and shooting them through the windows and killing them quite a few places. They've killed about 12 cops in the past two weeks, shooting them through the windows while the cops are sitting where they could sneak up on them. Now, maybe with the five-point safety belts, you can take them out of the car every year and change them. And I can have a couple of stunt guys. I used to know how to do them and put them in and everything, and I still do, but I don't wanna make any mistakes. So I can have a couple of stunt guys come up here, show the cops how to do it, or their mechanic, and he can do it every year. So you only gotta pay for it once. And I think they're three to 500 bucks, I'm not sure, I can't remember. And you should buy them where the stunt guys buy them because you know you're getting the right stuff. And the windows, did anybody check on the windows? Maybe you can take the windows out every year and put new ones in. So maybe you only have to put bulletproof windows in once. I think the police are sitting ducks, you know, riding. They don't pay enough money to make me a cop. They're riding around in a cruiser, but you know, at least if they had these windows on the front window, that's better than nothing. But I think all the windows should have them, and if you call someone up to find out if they can change them every year, then you only have to pay for those ones. And maybe do two or three cars at a time. But the five-point safety belts don't cost that much money, and you can put them in all the cruisers at once. I'll get a couple of stunt guys to come up here, show the cops it's no big deal how to use them, all you gotta do is buckle yourself in. But I can show them how to take them out and put them back in the following year. Or you do have a mechanic, I would say, right? Yeah, well, we should show the mechanic and he should change them every year. And then five-point safe belts, believe me, if the car rolls over, if the roof don't cave in on them, the five belt will protect them completely.
Thirty seconds left, Al.
Now, okay, I'll give every one of you guys a little hint. When you drive around in your car, always keep your belt, safety belt locked in the passenger seat if nobody's in there. And if you, by any chance, roll your car over, what you do is you duck down and you put your arm under that belt like that, and you pull yourself down and keep yourself below the dashboard, and you won't get hurt.
Three minutes is up.
Al, thank you for your comments.
That's for free.
We'll pass these on to the police chief. And I was under the impression that the police cars that we have, that's okay, it times up. I was just making it, they have safety glass or bulletproof glass. We'll check it out. So, thank you. That's the only card that I have, there's no one in the audience. And so, we now have a closed session item. So, Mr. City Attorney, would you briefly brief the council in regard to the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. We have three items on closed session this evening. Two are related. Items A and B are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The case name, it's the SEC versus City of Victorville. The case name and case number set forth on the agenda. Item A is for the Airport Authority, item B for the City Council. And the third item is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B, and the position is City Manager's position. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. We will now adjourn to executive session.
That one is good to go. One is good to go. One and two you can do. And four we can't do.
So we are gonna take action on number one?
One and two.
One and two?
And then, on the synthetic drug, I would just assume you open the public hearing just 'cause there's people here and give them the opportunity to talk, but we can't take action 'cause I don't have four votes on it. It needs a four-fifths.
On which one?
The urgency ordinance, I think it's number three. Oh, four, sorry, number four. So if you can just open the public hearing and then just continue it?
Yeah.
Four, open and continue?
Four.
All right.
Actually, you should do the same for B three. You should open both those and just continue them.
That's not a public hearing. Title 16 Code of Amendment, modifying the yard. Yeah. Well, we're gonna continue it, but hearing to open, is there?
Yes.
Probably?
Yep.
Public hearing, it sure is, okay. Running a minute late, my apologies. I'm going to call the regular session at six o'clock on October 6th, Tuesday 2015. First of all, Mr. Attorney, we had closed sessions, do you have announcements?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. We had three closed session items listed as items A, B, and C on the agenda. Items A and B were existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. There's no reportable action with respect to either of those items. Item C was Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B, and there's no action with respect to that item either.
Okay, thank you. Ryan McEckern, Councilmember McEckern is going to handle the invocation, and then the Pledge of Allegiance by Police Chief Sam Lachey. Please stand, please. According to the agenda, we didn't have anything, presentations, but we do have a presentation. I'm going to. Is this on? Ew, it's on, thank you. This is a proclamation. I'm going to not read every word, but I am going to read most of it because it's really important. It's a, "Whereas the City of Victorville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Victorville, living in and visiting. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and people are at the greatest risk from fires in their own homes. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. Whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. Whereas Victorville residents should install smoke alarms which meet the needs of the people who are deaf or hard of hearing in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, on every level of the home, and it doesn't say this, and especially if children are present." Extremely important. Whereas Victorville residents are responsive to public educational measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and Victorville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas Victorville's first responders are dedicated to reducing their occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas, the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Effectively to serve and remind us, we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out safely. I'm presenting this on behalf of Mayor Garcia and the Victorville City Council.
Throughout my career, I've responded to numerous fire deaths, and probably 95% of those are attributed to not having working smoke detectors. It's extremely important that you, yourself, check your smoke detectors, make sure they're operational, ensure that your neighbors and your family have working units. This is Fire Prevention Week, and I appreciate this proclamation from the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you again, on behalf of the City Council. City Clerk, would you present the agenda for the council, please?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there is just one revision to tonight's agenda, and that is on item number B three, a letter from the Building Industry Association in support of request for continuance of the public hearing for that item. And this has been provided to the council and to the public, and those are all the revisions I have. Mayor Protem Cox.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, B one, consideration of proposed ordinance number 2343. Is there any additional information from the staff before I open the public hearing?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor Protem.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on B one, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Victorville adding new chapter 10.30 to Title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code relating to stormwater and urban runoff management and discharge control. I have no cards on B one. Anyone want to speak on that item? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. It requires, is this an introduction?
This would be an introduction, so we would need a motion to accept the environmental exemption and introduce the ordinance for first reading.
Okay, can that be one motion?
Yes, yes, I will read the ordinance, 2343, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Adding a New Chapter 10.30 to Title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code Relating to Stormwater and Urban Runoff Management and Discharge Control."
I'll move for introduction and wait for the reading and find for the environmental exemption.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second?
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with unanimously.
Item B two, proposed resolution number 15065. Is there any additional information or corrections from the staff before I open the hearing?
Not at this time.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is resolution number 15-065, Proposed V Moose Renewable Energy Resource Procurement Plan. Do we have any cards? I will open the public hearing. If anyone wants to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Move for adoption of resolution number 15-065.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second?
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent, and I will make that correction on the vote on the first item as well, to note their absence.
On our next item is a public hearing on item B three. The city clerk indicated that this was going to be continued, however, it's scheduled for a public hearing. If there's no additional information from staff, I will open the public hearing. I do not have a card or anyone requesting to speak. Is there anyone who wants to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to... Oh, you do. Would you come up, please? I am sorry, I didn't see you.
Good evening, council, mayor. I just have one comment on this. This seems like this is really dragging on for a long time. So, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, and I'll just ask and look for an answer afterwards, but how long is this gonna go on? We've had some group meetings that I've attended, I haven't been able to make all of them. But it seems like every time I come in, what's his name? Oh, Mr. Rodriguez, has always got a continuance for everything. How long is that gonna go on? We gotta get this all set in stone. I know Scott's not here today, right?
I could answer the question.
Well, as could I.
We have been informed that all the council members will be here November 3rd, and so it's the intent to open the hearing, continue the hearing, and on November 3rd, we will take the rest of the hearing, close the hearing, and take whatever action the council wants to take at that time. So that should be the final.
Okay, great. I'd just like to see us put this behind us and, you know... Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, you guys.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, I know you're about to close the public hearing, and this isn't part of the public hearing, but this is being continued at staff's request, simply because we only have three council members present. So, you know, it's not something that the BIA even requested. The BIA did submit a letter in support of staff's recommendation that this be continued until that time.
Since we're not gonna take an action, is it acceptable then to continue the hearing?
Hearing to November 3rd.
Well, the motion would be to continue the hearing until November 3rd. Need a motion?
I'll move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
So November 3rd, Tuesday, this will be on the agenda. All the councilmen are supposed to be here. We should be taking a final action that night, okay? Thank you. Then item four, it's also a public hearing. This is an ordinance of the City of Victorville, and I'm going to ask the city attorney if he wants to make a short presentation or have additional comments in regard to this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cox. This, we were hoping to have this urgency ordinance acted on this evening. It deals with public health, safety, welfare matters with respect to the regulation of synthetic drugs. And what we have been finding is that every time we try and regulate these activities, the suppliers use different names and different types of products to try and get around that. Unfortunately, an urgency ordinance requires a four-fifths vote of the council, so we cannot take action on it this evening. So, the request is to open the public hearing and then continue this to the next meeting, October 20th.
Continue to October 20th? Are we going to have a full council?
We need four council members, so as long as we have four, we can take action on it. And, you know, I think it's a pressing issue, so the hope is, if for some reason we only have three, at that point, we'd continue it again.
Right. At this time, I'm going to open the hearing on the proposed ordinance 2347, related to synthetic stimulants and synthetic cannabinoids. Cannab... How do you pronounce it, finally?
Cannabinoids?
No. Okay, it's anyway. I have a card from Mike Grabhorn on B four. High Desert Community Coalition? Come forward, please.
Mike Grabhorn from the High Desert Community Coalition. First of all, I wanted to commend you on revisiting this already and adding some more things in there to put some more inclusions in there. And I've already got a call from a coalition in 29 Palms that they're saying if you get this passed, they wanna start structuring their ordinance like this also. I talked to your city attorney, and it sounds like everybody has a really good idea on how to keep this under control. The only question we have as a coalition is, the first ordinance was put into effect, I believe, January. We had three stores that were cited, and their merchandise was confiscated. One store was a repeat offender, has been cited twice, and we are curious, which I know you can't answer me now, and you're probably gonna get it later, but we're wondering where those sites are that were written to those stores, when something is gonna happen on it. But other than that, thank you for the good job that you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the only card I have. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to continue. Yes, and we've agreed that it would be October the 20th. That will be the final hearing. We will tend to close the hearing on October 20 and take an action at that time.
A motion to continue would be helpful?
Okay.
I'll move.
Do we have a motion? I'll second. We have a motion and second to continue.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
The consent calendar is C one, C two, C three, C four, C five. I don't have any cards, therefore, we can take an action unless there's additional information from staff or the attorney to approve these five items with one motion.
Nothing additional.
I have no additions.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
Next is the Board of Contract Rightway, under D, Written Communications. Board of Contract Rightway Roof Corporation. Recommendation that the City Council approve the order of a construction contract to Rightway Roof Corporation in the amount of $116,980 for restoration of the City of Victorville Hook Community Center gem roof. Any additional questions or information? Not? Need a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
D two. Board of Contract Shipley Construction, Victorville, that's the recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award Shipley Construction the contract to install two pumped waste tanks and a seepage pits at well numbers 204 and 208 as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2015-16 capital improvement projects. Any questions or additional information from staff?
Nothing additional.
Seeing none, the motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
Item D three. Resolution of the City Council, City of Victorville Municipal Utilities Services and authorizing City Manager to satisfy the electric resource adequacy capacity requirements established in accordance with the RA policy and California Independent System Operator Tariff, and two, establish prudent operational guidelines for the required resource adequacy capacity reserve margin set forth therein. Are there any questions or any additional information? There is a recommendation from staff, the City Council adopt resolution number 15-067.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
Item four is amendment to standard lease agreement for the Boeing Company. Any additional information or questions from the council? Seeing none? Recommendation that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the first amendment to the standard lease agreement by and between the Boeing Company and Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and approve an additional revenue appropriation in the amount of $3,027.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Garcia absent.
Mr. Mayor, if I just might, I think that this is an important thing to point out, you know, renewing a lease with Boeing, kind of a big deal. So, my applause to staff and everyone out at SCLA and what they're doing to continue to attract and keep companies like Boeing operating out there.
You're right, it is big. And from the council to the staff, thank you for the hard work on this. These are creating jobs, and that's what we've all pledged to do. Next item is the proposed skate park. This item is put on the City Council for discussion, and of course, any recommendation that the council would like to make at this time.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I might, I do have a brief verbal report that I'd like to give before we get into the public comments or council questions and comments, only because I was able to attend the League of Cities Conference last week and have new information that- and have new information that had, we had it before the publishing of the agenda, would have been included in the written item, if, if I could have that.
Absolutely.
So, this item, just to clarify one thing, that it's not on the agenda to fund or build a skate park. Simply seeking direction on whether or not we should pursue that. When it first came to the council, the council sent it to the Community Services Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, it hasn't received a consensus there, one way or the other. I think there's been some concern by some of the committee members that they're not sure where their council member stands on this issue, so they've been reticent to, to take a vote on it. That's one reason why it's back also, because it's taken some time, and Councilman Negretti wanted to get it back on this agenda. As I mentioned, I was able to attend a conference last week, and one of the programs was entitled "The Changing Face of Skate Parks," and actually, it was pretty interesting. Some of my notes from that, it was kind of, if your town doesn't have a skate park, then it is one. And we see that. We see kids skating all over town as a result. One of the things that the speaker mentioned was that skating is, has been considered sort of a counterculture activity, and putting in a skate park does help cut crime by giving these counterculture kids something else to do, somewhere to do it. There was concerns about, and has been concerns about, liability. Again, the speaker mentioned that the counterculture aspect to it, the injuries and scars and scrapes and things are sort of a badge of honor, so they don't typically want to sue for it. It's, it's almost a source of pride for some of them. Another interesting fact is that skateboarding will be an Olympic sport in 2020, in the Sochi Olympics. He likened it to snowboarding. Snowboarding used to be sort of a counterculture. Skiers didn't like the snowboarders go going down the same runs and things, but once snowboarding hit the Olympics, it really made it more of a mainstream sport. And now, snowboarders outnumber skiers on the slopes. So, the thought is, or at least of this speaker, was that once skateboarding is in the Olympics, it will make it more of a mainstream sport. I think it's kind of gone back and forth over the years, over the decades, really. There is an assembly bill that the speaker mentioned, AB 1146. We talked about liability, and as the council will recall, skateboarding at a skate park under certain conditions is exempt from liability. So, the city would be exempt from liability for skateboarding. The problem is that it only applies to skateboarding. It does not apply to bicycles, does not apply to scooters and inline skates. So, there was an assembly bill, 1146 introduced, which would expand that exception to include bicycles, scooters, inline skates, and actually, wheelchairs. We've seen a video, a couple of videos, I showed some to the staff, of kids in wheelchairs that are doing some pretty incredible things at skate parks, so pretty inspiring, actually. It, it's interesting because the, the conference was last week. The speaker mentioned this bill. I had actually suggested to a local enthusiast that he lobbied the legislature to get that approved. That was over the weekend, actually, and this morning, I looked it up just to give a quick status update, and actually, it was chaptered by the governor in August. So, at effective January 1st of 2016, skate parks, if they meet the certain conditions, which is, we have looked at, would be exempt from liability for skateboarding, non-motorized bicycles, inline skates, wheelchairs, and scooters as well. So, given all that, and given the size of our city and the growth of our city, staff believes we'd be better served by having a multi-use type park that incorporates all these activities. That would now be exempt from liability. So, as you're, as you deliberate, as we seek direction on whether or not to do that, staff would recommend that we be given direction to move forward and bring the item back to the city council once we've identified a viable location and funding source. The information that's in the packet tonight is from a couple of years ago. I don't think anybody thinks Ebedell Park is a good spot for it, but at the time, that was really the only one available. We would prefer to look all around the city for a better site and also then seek some funding through grants and things. Go ahead.
Thank you. I really appreciate this. This is great, great information, especially when you get into the numbers about a skate park calculator and just based on our population and the size of projects that we're talking about here. The intent and recognize the constraints that we have in this city with citing locations probably the number one issue, and I think we can work through that. I'm really looking for the private sector and the community to also help out in this as, as is possible. But certainly, asking the city to do it all on their own, you know, it could, it could be feasible, difficult, not impossible, but it could take a lot longer. But the more the community is involved with it, I think this will be a collaborative effort that we can overcome things like location, et cetera, et cetera. But, but what I appreciate about this is, is that conceptually, whether it's a skate park system, whether it's multi-use, I, there is a need, I believe. I appreciate everything that Doug mentioned right now. So, my intention for this city council is just to conceptually approve a skate park and, and just work with city staff over the coming months and, and, and just work it out as far as scoping, size, cost, that type of thing, and let the city council, you know, steer that project as we go. But the only thing I'm asking the city council for today is to conceptually approve a skate park that the city staff can then start to action and provide monthly updates.
Thank you, Councilmember Negretti. Any questions, any comments? Rest of the council? I, I'm going to open this up after we hear from the council. Okay. We have one card, Mr. William Fermege.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Cox. Members of the council. My name is William Fermege. I live in the Victor Valley. I'm here to talk in support of the bike skateboard park, multi-use park. I seen on the Daily Press story that Spohn Ranch is involved. They did the Adelanto and Lasurn Valley Bike Skateboard Parks. Those two parks are okay for those smaller cities. The parks Spohn Ranch built for Long Beach, the Michael K. Greenscape Park, is what Victorville needs to give all the riders with different skill levels a place to ride and keep them coming and going 24/7/365. Our Apple Valley Park is, is, is a full-on concrete park, which is the best way, but more costly. I and many other, others consider Victorville the heart of the Victor Valley with the 15 freeway passing through our area. If you build it right, people will stop to ride the Victorville Park as they pass through our area and spend money here. My family and other riders, we know, always research our trips when we attend family events, parties out of the area, out of the area, doing trips, to see if we're, to see if where we're heading has a bike skateboard park. If they do, we load our bikes and take them along on our road trips to visit them. I'm sure other bikers and skaters do that as well. Also, keep in mind, a proper-built skate park is nearly maintenance-free, requires no weekly watering like ball sports do. Also, several police officers I've spoke to over the years, attending different skate parks, also tell me that these parks, that with these parks, they know where their, that most kids are at. So, can you please move this forward and give the youth a place for their chosen sport and get them out of those broken abandoned parking lots along Seventh Street? I'll end with this. We all know there will always be more important issues like roads, police, and fire issues and keeping the gas, the grass green at the country club. But, but these kids needing a skate park should be a priority, too. I looked online before I left the house and seen that you guys had 59 pages from Spohn Ranch on like other little topics, on like how kids will break bottles and then the cops will get called out, but it's not the skaters. It's like other kids hanging out, causing mischief. And that was pretty informative, but I've still got to read a lot of it, because it's like 59 pages. And I also read that, I also wanted to say, too, these kids that bike and skateboard, they're mostly from broken homes.
You have 30 seconds.
And they just go to these skate parks to have a place to hang out and belong. And most of them learn how to pick up tools and work on their bikes and skateboards on their own. And that's kind of rare these days, because I know a lot of men that don't even know which one of a screwdriver to pick up and hold. And these kids learn how to pick up tools and work with them, and please approve this. Thanks.
You have 10 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Fermege. I have, that's, I have no other cards on the subject, so therefore, we'll come back to the council. Mr. McEckern?
Uh, yeah, I, I would agree with Mr. Negretti that, you know, this is something that we need to move forward. But I'm also concerned that our Community Services Advisory Committee hasn't gotten to a point where they can make a recommendation to the city council. So, if they need to hear from the city council that this is what we want them to do, then I think tonight, we need to send them that message. You know, it's akin to the Planning Commission and, you know, the side yard and, and lot setbacks. You know, we depend upon our Planning Commission to make recommendations to, to the city council. This is the same thing. It's a park issue. We have, uh, we have our Community Planning Services Advisory Committee to do just that. Okay? So, from my perspective, I, I also, too, at the League of Cities Conference, had an opportunity to visit with the folks from, is it?
Spohn Ranch.
Spohn Ranch. And just, you know, just talk about, conceptually, how, how we could do this. It can be done, but I can't stress enough the fact that the private sector has to step up and provide some of the funding for this. If you think the city council is going to vote to spend $300,000 to build a skate park, it's not going to happen. What I need is, I need the private sector, those people that do business with the city of Victorville that want to see us succeed, and, and those that are enthusiasts in this arena to step up and find the money. It's not all the money, but we need you to do something with respect to that. But I, I really think that the Community Services Advisory Committee needs to come back to the council with a more current recommendation with the auspices of, that's what the council wants, because at least you have two of us up here tonight that are saying this. I, I would imagine Mayor Pro Tem Cox will agree. Just come back to us with something that is more current, something that minimizes the actual general fund, funding that would come out of the city, something that maximizes the private sector funding, something that, you know, allows those that want to see the skate park go out and be able to raise the money to help fund this, and if necessary, to staff it. There are different models. You can staff it. You don't have to staff it. I got a full education on that when I was at the League of Cities. But the point is, is that from my perspective, I agree. We need to move this forward. But at the same time, without the private sector and those that are interested in having it built, stepping up and helping us do it, we're not going to do it just by making a decision up here tonight. So, what I would ask is that the Community Services Advisory Committee come back with a recommendation that's more current and that includes private sector involvement, so that it's something that we can approve conceptually. Conceptually, we're approving it tonight that we want to build a skate park, but approve it going forward and actually seeing it built in the next couple of years.
Councilman Negretti, this was your thoughts and ideas. Would you like to make a motion in regard to this item?
Oh, no. Actually, I appreciate Councilman McEckern's comments, but does anybody know when the next Community Services Committee meeting is?
I don't know off the top of my head. What I was going to suggest, actually, was that, that I attend that meeting. I think there may be some confusion on exactly their role and to talk about the fact that the council members each rely on their committee member to, to make recommendations without having to come back to their appointer to, to, for assistance.
Not sure, not sure where we're headed here. Certainly, all the things that we can provide in the community to help people who live here, work here, pay taxes here, including the young, is, is going to be a blue ribbon for our community. In regard to the committee, I, I don't want them to feel that we're moving ahead and ignoring them because their input is important, but I don't think that should hold up the staff's putting together the information. And possibly, maybe the staff can attend the meeting to make sure that it doesn't get scheduled and delayed, provide the information, and also keep the council appraised of progress being made. That was part of it, to keep the council, so we will know exactly what's going on.
When it first came to the council, I think the council thought that the committee would make a decision, make a recommendation, and it would come back here. That hasn't happened. And I think that was part of Eric's frustration. Christian, real quick, when is the next meeting?
It's the third, um, third Monday of the month, so there's one coming up here in about two weeks.
Okay, okay. So, if the council desires, I'd be happy to attend that to talk about the skate park issue, but as well as talk about kind of their role as the committee and I think what, what the council is expecting of them.
Well, and I, and I think if, if it's appropriate, if you need a council member or two there, I know you can't have three, but, you know, if you, if, if they need encouragement to let them know that this is what we want to see them do, I just want the ideas to come from them. I want them to develop, I mean, yes, we want a skate park. Okay, so what does that mean? I want, that needs to be left to them. How it develops, where it's placed, all those types of decisions needs to come out of that advisory committee. Otherwise, I don't know why we have it. And so, I would like to see them come up with the ideas, present something to the council as a recommendation for us to approve. That's, that's really what I want to see.
Are you the liaison with that committee?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, the committee itself does a variety of things. One of the things we have, ask them to do is, talk to your council member. Find out what their opinion is and what they know, and let's see if we can give them information. And this is exactly the kind of things that we do. Getting this information tonight and doing a staff report and providing this information is what we wanted to do to begin with. We just needed to know, and we wanted it to come from the committee, to say, the committee's recommending this to you, and they should have a good idea, and we should have a good idea, if this is what you want. The process itself, it does involve community outreach in terms of, in this case of Spohn Ranch, going out and actually holding community meetings and getting ideas and looking at the types of parks that are available. There's a variety of things on, out there that we can do, which you'll see from, from the staff report and, and Spohn Ranch's information they provided. Whether we go with a series of small sites, one large site, a couple of smaller ones, those are things we can look at along the way. But I think right now, what we're more than anything else looking for is some guidance.
Well, I think clearly, the council's interested, at least the councilmen that are here, the council persons that are here tonight, see positive aspects in adding this to our overall recreational agenda. The only problem I'm having is, is this going to be a skate park, a bicycle skate park? I don't use those, and I don't know what would be incorporated or who's going to make that decision. Somewhere along the line, we're going to have to agree what we want to be included, whether it's one large, two small. We have a huge land area for 125,000 people. I don't know what the needs are. One, three, what is the cost? And Mr. McEckern is right. I think the private sector is going to have to weigh in. No matter how much we wish this is a chunk of money that we simply don't have, and we're going to have to find out ways to get it. And certainly, it's going to be a major issue with the budget next year. But the only way we're going to get there is start now and move rather quickly, so.
I think, given the direction we have tonight, we can move forward.
Absolutely.
Assisting the Community Services Advisory Committee and involving the public in making, helping make those decisions. When appropriate, we will bring it back to the city council.
Just to be clear, quite frankly, I brought this up in December. That's why I wanted it on here today, because I'm not sure what the process is, and it sounds like there's some question as to what the role is of the committee and how it functions. But this is a great learning opportunity for all involved, and that's what I call it. It's a test case, and, and hopefully, once we crack the code, it'll be a wash, rinse, and repeat deal. But I appreciate it. I'm trying to work through the process as it's lined out, so I look forward to hearing back from the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you feel you have enough direction?
Yes.
Okay. Then, at this point in time, I think that you'll cede with staff. I think it's clear that you have the marching orders from the council.
Yes, thank you.
So, we'll move forward. Next item? Next item is, uh, Dan Mancy Division Chief, right, El Nino Storm Preparation. Who's going to make the presentation, or is it just the receiving file?
It's really a receiving file. Uh, we've got some written information on some of the things we've done so far and where we're headed. Um, as we move forward, uh, with more public outreach and public input, uh, we'll come back to the council, um, when appropriate. Um, I know that there's plans in there of reaching out to each of the neighborhoods who historically have had potentials for flooding so that they know what to do in the event of an emergency, and I know that, uh, the sheriff's department is also, uh, taking some steps, um, to be prepared as well for some potential swift water rescues and other things, so.
Doug, on this, uh, we still have our emergency, uh, volunteer folks that, you know, get together every now and then to prepare for earthquakes or, or whatnot. Is that part of this whole?
Um, we need to incorporate it better.
Okay.
Um, we've been without an emergency services coordinator for some time. Um, the, uh, class and comp actually took care of that by assigning those duties to an individual, so he's kind of getting up to speed on, on everything. That's one of the things that...
Okay. I just think that would be important because, you know, most of the time, California, we're talking about earthquakes, not so much flooding, but in light of recent, uh, events, we need to be talking more about that as well.
Yeah, in just the short time, the, the biggest thing that we've done is the city's main information number. If you just call, tried calling the city, City Hall, um, after hours, uh, you'll hear recording, and one of the options would be to take you directly to Public Works, uh, for this type of emergency, so, uh, citizens don't have to know a special number or, or anything. It's just simply call City Hall and push number four, and that'll take you to the Public Works, uh, emergency phone.
Thank you.
Do we have a updated emergency preparedness plan?
Not at this time.
If it's going to be incorporated, well, and I know there's some work to do.
Yeah.
The people on the ground know what to do, but as far as having the plan itself, if it's going to be incorporated in the emergency preparedness plan, is it the intent of staff to update the whole plan?
Uh, it is our intent to update the whole plan. It's one of the duties, uh, that's, uh, of the, it's not a new employee, but it's new duties for him. Um, at this point, we are focused more on, uh, potentials for storm damage with El Nino coming than anything else in the emergency plan.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. I'd like, and I appreciate this information as someone works through that, can I get that emergency preparedness plan? I don't, is it available?
Um, there, well, e- each council member, when it was produced, last produced, got one, but I'm not sure exactly where, whatever copy that would have been at your desk might be, but we'll get you a copy of it certain.
Okay, great. And, and again, one of the things is, okay, so we had an issue recently, uh, and one of the things is, we certainly can't predict what's going to happen, and we certainly can't account for, uh, folks being washed down a drain and popping out at Victor Valley College. I, I understand that, that's not what I'm talking about. When I asked for this to be put on the agenda, we actually had a situation where, uh, drains were plugged and, uh, very rapidly, the water builds up, and the next thing you know, we had three homes with water damage. That's, that's very important to me, and, uh, avoiding that next time is important. So let's look at the case that did happen, Verde Street. Okay? Let's say that that is, uh, blocked again. Someone calls the on-call number. I'm assuming somebody from the city is going to be out there at Verde Street. True or false?
Um, any, anywhere something is reported, we will send a Public Works crew to assess and take care of the problem.
So the drain itself is our responsibility to clear the drain if it's blocked?
Yes.
So there's actually someone on call 24 hours a day?
Yes.
That would actually get in there and unplug that drain?
Uh, if it's safe to do so, yes. I mean, there's a lot of factors that could go into it, but yes, we have someone from Public Works on call 24 hours a day, and in a storm event, we have multiple persons who are, uh, on call in the city, setting up, uh, a variety of apparatus and...
So, so, Councilmember Negretti, if I, if I might interrupt, um, this is a sensitive issue, since I believe a claim has been filed, so with respect to specifics, I'd, you know, urge that the, the discussion be just on general nature of, of how we respond to these issues.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Next item is D7, a proposed city council member offices. Uh, Mr. Negretti, you asked that this be placed on the agenda?
Yep. Great. So, uh, as I'm looking back there in the office space and the layout here, I appreciate that, um, I, I'm looking at, uh, storage areas in there, I'm looking at a conference room, I'm looking at, um, a potential for having a mayor's office in the conference room F, as an example. Um, is there any consideration, any issue? Is that, is that a high priority conference room? Can we convert these? That's just an open-ended question at this point.
Um, it, certainly it could be converted if that's the desire of the council. Um, you know, I don't have a recommendation necessarily, other than, I think one thing that was mentioned was using office space, uh, in other departments. I'd recommend against that, just because the city clerk's office, city manager's office, staff are, are sort of used to dealing with council members. Um, unfortunately, for reasons I don't fully understand, uh, staff in other departments can be intimidated by, uh, council members and myself even. Um, so to the extent the city council wants, uh, individual offices, uh, my recommendation would be that you direct staff to come up with a plan to make them, but make them on this north end of the building rather than elsewhere throughout City Hall.
Right, and I understand maybe s- not all, uh, council members care about this or whatever, but, um, I would, uh, I'll just hold off on this one for a little while.
Okay.
I have no further comments.
We're just going to hold this at, advance until we hear a later time from either staff or Mr. Negretti and...
I'd like everyone here at a later time. I wouldn't...
Okay, fine.
Would you like to continue it till the November 3rd meeting?
I'm sorry, yes, please.
Okay.
So, move for continuance till November 3rd?
It can just be put on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Put on the agenda for the...
I wasn't sure either.
What is it, November 3?
November 3, we'll put it on November 3rd.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, we have the public comments. Address the city council on items that you have an interest in. Since they are not agendized items and we have no idea what the individual may speak on, they are limited to three minutes, we take it under consideration. We don't enter into the debate because if we have an important item, the public, the general public, including those watching, want to be notified ahead of time in case they want to attend the meeting. But we do take the input, we take it seriously, and we'll have someone get back to you. I have one card, Letitia, is?
Good evening. Uh, yes, I wanted to find out the outcome from last agenda in September 15th, where the city manager was going to meet with the fire department regarding the flooding there on Verde Street. I'm one of the property owners that was hit hard, that when I was here on the 15th, I spoke, and I addressed the fact that this is already the third time that my house was hit, and I want something done. I was told there was going to be a meeting. I appreciate that 24-hour number, but I want something, I want it fixed. Yes, I can call them to come and, and clear out that drain, but do you know, it was three minutes that that water built up and came up into my driveway and into my home? So by the time I call somebody, I hope that they will be there within three minutes to clear that out. I mean, I want, I want it fixed. I'm hoping, I was hoping to get an outcome, whether there was plans to upgrade it, to make that bigger, something. I, I appreciate the, the, you know, coming out and helping, but I want it fixed. Yesterday, with yesterday's storm, I was at work with anxiety. Calling, it just so happened my niece that lives here with me didn't work yesterday. Otherwise, I would have had to taken a day off just because of the fear of that happening to me again. I can't live like that. It's, it's, it's too much. It's causing me stress and anxiety. I kept having to call, how's the street looking? How's the trench? Thank, and, and again, I want to also thank the fire department. I, I failed to do that the last time. I do appreciate them coming out. They actually got me the sandbags and, and dug a trench in the back. I appreciate that, and hopefully that's going to help. But, please, this needs to get fixed, and that's what I, I want. I want to see what the outcome was. Is there any plans to get it fixed? What's going to happen?
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Robinson, would you contact this individual a little later time?
Yes.
So that she can at least have her questions answered?
Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you. Norman Miller?
But while I'm here, I'll say something.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn it over.
That's okay. I just want to say that we've had some help from the, uh, engineering department and Public Works in the past couple of months, and I want to thank them for that. One of the improvements has been Bear Valley Road, which has been needed for many years, and it is much, much nicer now. Appreciate that, and the Golden Triangle appreciates that, because there are more businesses coming out that way. And Public Works has been helping us with some of the, uh, problems we've been having in the area, and we appreciate that too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I do not have more cards, uh, from the audience. Reports from the city manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I hope all of you had a chance to make it out to the Fall Festival. Um, to say it was our most successful would be a tremendous understatement. Um, we don't really have a, a gate that everyone walks through to be able to get a good idea for numbers. Um, I've heard 20,000, I've heard 30,000. Um, I don't really know. All I know is that from about 10:30 until really closed, the street was packed with people, um, especially, uh, in the late morning, uh, up through lunch. Um, so it was a hugely successful event, uh, due in large part to, uh, our sponsors, um, who made it possible for us to also, uh, do a trade sponsorship with the local radio stations from El Dorado Broadcasting, so people heard about it on the radio daily for about a month ahead of time, and I'm sure that had a huge impact. It was a great event, very well attended. The, uh, other things coming up, uh, in, around the city, this Saturday is our community yard sale at Hook Park from 8 to noon, 8 a.m. to noon. Uh, the 17th, uh, Saturday, the 17th, is an animal control license and vaccination clinic at, clinic at the McYard, McArt Yard entrance from 8 to noon. Uh, there's kites in the park at Sunset Ridge Park on the 18th, uh, and then Community Cleanup Day is coming up on the 24th. It happens to be the same day as the Victor Valley Bicycle Tour as well. On Halloween, we have a run in the park at Hook Park. Uh, registration is at 7:30. All this information is available, uh, by calling City Hall or, or on our website. Um, I'll stop there, I've got three more months here, but I'll mention those maybe next month. Uh, other than, December 5th, uh, is the, uh, Christmas Parade as well as the Festival of Lights and Tree Lighting Ceremony. Uh, we were talking about this with, uh, Councilman McHackren earlier. Uh, the tree died on us this year, so we're coming up with, uh, alternative plans, and we will have some kind of a celebration of some kind, so. Uh, lastly, just very briefly, uh, if I sound a little bit funny, I am having some ortho- orthodontic work done. My daughter and I are getting braces at the same time, so it's my second go-around. I had braces 30-plus years ago, and it obviously didn't work, so if I sound a little funny, I apologize. Hopefully, my mouth will learn how to talk again once the braces are on completely. All right.
Thank you, Doug. Reports from council members.
I just feel your pain, Doug. I went through that when I was about nine, so.
I did it at age 12, and now I get to do it again.
Ever gone through it? Don't want to. I don't have any other items. Uh, no reports from the council, no reports from staff. Very much for attending our meeting tonight, and we will see you in October, what? October 20. We'll see you all then. Thank you.